Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, June the 7th.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. 2022, we welcome you here this evening and glad that you are with us this evening. We are, of course, on TV as well, so we'll be recording that. We appreciate it. And as we normally do, before we get started, we will have our roll call to let you know who is here with us and who is on our Zoom. So we will start with our roll call first, and I'll start with our City Attorney, Mr. Rohr.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Jonathan?
Jonathan Beal, here.
Here, Ike Perkins.
Thank you.
David Stevens.
Thank you. Joe Gibbons?
Todd Perdue.
Ralph Freshwood.
Kent Greer.
Thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem Thomas is out of town and won't be with us this evening on that. All right, our City Manager?
Scott Hildebrand here.
Yes.
Sure we can.
Our City Corps?
Joshua Harris.
Communications Director. And in the back, we have Chief Phelps, that's back there, thank you, sir, and Matthew Anthony from the Economic Development Department, our Main Street Coordinator, is here tonight. Radford Thomas, our Public Utilities Director, Ed Evans, our Interim Public Works Director, and Ginny Weavitt, our Planning Director. All right, on Zoomed, we have Donna Bean.
Here.
Thank you. Our Finance Director, Fire Chief Ken Hare.
I'm here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Storey.
I'm here.
Thank you. And I believe I've got everybody's, is there anybody I left out on Zoom? I think we got them all, and we welcome from the news topic Katie Davis, of course. Glad to have you with us, Katie, as always. So thank you. That is our roll call. And as we normally do, we will start, just a minute, with a moment of silence, and they will remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. As we go to this time of prayer, I'd like for you to please to keep the family of longtime coach and administrator in our county, Mr. Dan Hardy, in your thoughts and prayers. Dan passed away this past week, and we want to keep he and his family. He was longtime coach and player at South Caldwell High School and actually played on the first state champ, almost state championship team. I think they were runner-up in his first year, and then went on to coach at South Caldwell and other places. So we will be thinking about Dan and his family as we move forward. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Now, if you will, please rise for our moment of silence and remain standing for our Pledge Thank you. We salute the flag. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. As we get started tonight, we have a couple of very special recognitions to start our meeting with tonight. And the first one, we're going to be recognizing a longtime servant that worked with our Planning Board, our Board of Adjustments, longtime resident here. Matt, come up and join me, if you will. Matt served 17 years with our Planning Board, Board of Adjustments. Matt's family is well-known, as you know, around Caldwell County, custom veneers and, gosh, the Martin family was involved in so many things. But we thank you for what you've meant to our city on our Planning Board. I know you've been a great member of that. You've helped us do a lot of great planning for our city. Thank you for our association with our fire departments, Station 3. That has been a real pleasure. As we said a minute ago, we bawled it at the right time, I'll tell you that. We sure did. But we're very proud of Station 3 and all that it's meant to us. So I have a proclamation first I want to present to you, and if we will, I will read this. Resolution honoring Mr. Matt Martin. Whereas Matt Martin has served faithfully and diligently as a member of the Lenore Planning Board since 2005, when he was first appointed, and whereas Matt Martin went on to serve as a member of the Lenore Board of Adjustment, as well as a member of the Lenore Historic Preservation Commission, and whereas Matt Martin during his 17-year tenure as a board member has served with great competence, made important contributions to a large variety of land development cases, including the adoption of a comprehensive plan, amendments to the Land Development Code, rezonings, conditional use permits, variances, conditional zoning districts, and other planning projects. And whereas Matt Martin is being honored and recognized for his volunteerism, devotion to the community, and his commitment to hard work. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lenore City Council hereby expresses sincere appreciation to our friend and colleague, who through this leadership and dedicated service to the city, has earned respect and has made lasting contributions for the betterment of our city. Be it further resolved that I, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lenore, North Carolina, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, and all the citizens, do hereby extend sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Matt Martin for his dedicated, devoted, and outstanding service this 7th day of June 2022. Thank you very much. We're going to shoot a better picture, but want to give you that. We'll get one. Now, one other thing we'd like to present to you. And please, thank you. This is our City of Lenore flag that we'd like to give to you for your service and presented to Matt Martin in recognition of 17 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the Lenore Planning Board and Board of Adjustments, Lenore City Council. Matt, we really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, and all the council and city having faith in that we served on the floor 17 years.
We will. Yes, sir. You're welcome to say anything else you want, sir. Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. All right, let's get a picture with the.
You want to do them at the end, and we'll do the two groups like last time, so the council doesn't have to come down.
That'll be great. We'll do that. Save you some steps. Thank you.
All right. Don't put on my hat for this.
Tonight is another very special recognition, and I'm going to ask Athletic Director from Caldwell Community College to come up and join me here, Jeff Link. And Jeff, you and I spent a lot of time talking this year. It's been, it's been one of those fantastic seasons that we are so proud of. You know, we have a long baseball history in Caldwell County. We have champions in Little League, Senior League, high school champions, Legion Baseball Champions, semi-pro teams from the old days of the Oilers and the Chiefs, Furniture Kings, so many teams, and now we have a community college champion. So we are very proud of our community college and what it has meant to this season. And we tonight want to have, we've got a special recognition. You know, our team is only really two years old. It was, it was started in a brainstorm of Community College President Mark Porch in 2018. He talked about, I want to have a baseball and softball program at our community college. And he went at, went out to do it and found out what, what's the best way to do it. He hired the great guys as our athletic directors and our staff, and he hired one of the best coaches he could find in Frank Pate, a man who builds baseball programs. He did it at Catawba Valley Community College, coached at Lenore Ryan, and among other things. But did such a great job. And, and this year, just in the second year of the program, won 49-9 record, won the Region 10 Championship, first one in history, won the Mid-Atlantic District Championship, and competed in the World Series, the National Junior College Athletic Association World Series, and finished third in the nation. We went into that as the number-one team in the nation. So what, how do you write that? It's unbelievable how you can put things like that together and be such special. But anyway, I want to present this to you. Congratulations to the 2022 Caldwell Community College Technical Institute Cobra's baseball team on this outstanding season. Whereas Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute President Dr. Mark Porch, who understands the value of a diverse athletics program in providing enjoyment and opportunities for students, and whereas in the fall of 2018, led by Dr. Porch, Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute announced the addition of men's baseball and women's softball to the athletics program. And whereas the 2020 season for both the baseball and softball teams were interrupted by COVID-19, and 2021 was the first full season the teams played. And whereas the Community College Cobras baseball team plays in the National Junior College Athletic Association, the Governing Association of Community College, State College, and Junior College Athletics throughout the United States. And whereas the Cobras baseball team completed their 2021 and 2022 regular season conference schedule of, that's the Region 10, with 33 wins and no losses. And whereas the Cobras baseball won its first Region 10 Division III Championship in program history at Moore Park in Mooresville, North Carolina. And whereas the Cobras baseball swept the best-of-three series to win the NJCAA Mid-Atlantic District Division III Baseball Championship in May in Monroeville, Pennsylvania. And whereas the Cobras baseball team was ranked number-one in the nation in Division III when they advanced to the NJCAA Division III Baseball World Series held at Pioneer Park in Greenville, Tennessee from May 28 to June 2, 2022, and went 3-2 to finish third, completing an amazing run for the team and an impressive achievement for such a young baseball program. And whereas the Cobras played 58 games in 2022 and finished with 49 wins and nine losses. And whereas the Cobras baseball team players, Coach Frank Pate, Athletic Director Jeff Link, and Community College President Dr. Mark Porch should be recognized and honored for this outstanding achievement. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, as Mayor, and on behalf of the City of Lenore City Council, we recognize, honor, and congratulate the Community College Cobras baseball team, their coaches, their staff, the athletic staff, and the players and their parents on an outstanding and truly amazing season this 7th day of June 2022. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I will turn it over to you.
Because I've got some special presentations. I did look back over my text messages, and for the month of April, May, I text you more than I did my wife angry. So, and, and you can attest to that, right? But Joe has been such a big supporter of, of the baseball team, and the City of Lenore has really been a big supporter of what we're trying to do with athletics, our softball team. Let me brag on them for just a little bit. Two seasons that we've played softball, 66 and 33. And we get to play, Kenny has been great with us over the, over at the Lenore Optimus Park, and pretty much just let us have the use of that field, and we certainly enjoy that partnership with the City of Lenore. So I think, thank the council for that. And, but our baseball team, we are certainly proud of what they've done. Again, it starts at the top. I'm glad you mentioned that, Dr. Porch. He couldn't be with us tonight. Dr. Porch is in Raleigh, tending to some state business down there. Coach Pate is a little bit tired at the end of the season, as you might can imagine, and spending some time with his wife and family, so he couldn't be here tonight. But I'm certainly glad to be here and certainly glad to represent Caldwell Community College. But as we said, Joe has been our biggest fan, and in every game, I call or text, and if he's not at the game, he's at most of our home games, but if they're on the road, I usually will give Joe several text updates and let him know what's going on, and he's been right there from day one. When we start the season in February, and it's about 20 degrees and blowing snow, Joe's out there with us. And then when we finish up in May, and we're all sweating, and it's 80-some degrees, he's there with us. So Mayor, we do appreciate what you do for us. So when we won the Region 10 Championship, and we were down at Moore Park, and I was texting Joe on that day, I said, what size T-shirt do you wear? And he sent me back what size he wore, and then a couple days later, he was like, why didn't you need my T-shirt size?
Tell us what size.
We needed your T-shirt size so we could give you a T-shirt that says Region Champions 2022.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, it'll fit. Matches your hat. So Todd's already hit me up for a hat, too. I'm going to run out of, run out of gear to give away. Then, Joe, last week, when we were playing in Greenville, and we were going back and forth, and Joe was down in Raleigh with some state business and couldn't be there, and we talked on the phone quite a bit. He came over. We didn't go, we went down on Saturday as a traveling group, and since Greenville was so close, and there were teams from Minnesota, Illinois, Texas, Massachusetts, so we had a pretty good representation. We were the closest team, two and a half hours away, so we were fortunate that we could go back and forth. Most of our parents were able to go up and spend the week there. Once they won on Saturday, we knew that they were guaranteed to be playing on Monday, so most of our delegation decided that we were going to stay at home on Sunday evening. So we had a little bit of a viewing party down at Hudson, and I'm on the town council in Hudson. That's a good thing, because I think we, I think we were a little bit too loud, yelling at the TV on a couple of strike three calls that we felt should have been, or ball four calls that we felt should have been strike three, but. Yeah, so, but Joe was there with us watching the game and was keeping up with it the rest of the week. And so he asked me, he said, hey, will you pick me up a program? And I got him a program, and when we got, the team came back, we finished up on Tuesday night, the team got back on Wednesday afternoon. And so I had the team autograph your program. So there you go. That's got everyone's autograph.
Thank you very much. Very honored.
So, but we, again, we appreciate, Joe, your support of baseball and in the, in the City of Lenore, and certainly, folks, I hope you guys realize it's not just a give-and-take that y'all are giving us out. We hope that we're giving you something back, not just to be proud of, but the first year that we were doing this, I was talking to a team from Wake Tech, I was talking to a parent, and he was saying, yeah, we came up and we're staying at the Comfort, Comfort Inns or the Hampton Inn. And I was like, that's money that's coming into Lenore, and they're staying here, they're eating here, they're spending their money here. Most of our players, we don't have a lot of players from Caldwell County. Most of our players are from, Coach Pate kind of has a pipeline into the Mooresville area, into the Asheville area. So those folks are coming up here, spending their weekend, they're going out to eat in our restaurants here in Lenore and Caldwell County. So that is generating some tax revenue for you guys. So we appreciate what you do for us, but I hope that you realize that it's not a one-way street. We hope that we're able to give you something back as well, too. And to represent this town and this county, it certainly is. And again, it starts with Dr. Porch, my boss, Dina Holman, who's Vice President of Student Services, and then also Coach Pate, and you just can't say enough about Coach Pate, just a tremendous molder of men. If you've ever met him, one of the most, I can have a terrible day and just feel down and out, and I walk into the office, and he makes you, he's, he's a coach, he makes you feel that much better and makes you want to do your best in and out each day. So we're blessed to have him, blessed to have the community college that we have, the support, faculty, staff, and then Coach Pate will tell you, it's our students. You're, you're as good as you recruit, and you're talking, you read all that. And then the other day, Coach Pate, being the, the coach that he is, he says, well, you're only as good as your last game, and we got beat 11-1 that last game. But, you know, it's something to shoot forward next year. So we're already looking forward to next season and repeating next year.
Jeff, thank you very much for being here. We're going to put these up and let everybody, we want you to picture with the Region 10 Championship and the Mid-Atlantic District Championship, the first in Caldwell Community College history, and we hope there's going to be a couple hundred of these hanging on the wall down there as we keep moving forward, but we appreciate that. We are proud to partner with, with the softball team, who's been really great, as you said, plays at Mulberry, at Lenore Optimus Park, great field there, the old, our Dave King Field, where we played Little League, a lot of us did, and proud of that. And then, of course, Walker Stadium, our historic stadium, is where that's now Cobra Field up there, and we're, we're proud of that to be a part of a lot of history of our baseball program. So we have the history here, and now we've added some new pieces to it, and we certainly appreciate all that, working together, and we're going to keep moving forward with that. So thank you again. Thank you for the T-shirt and the program. Those are treasured pieces that I will always love. So we'll shoot, we'll shoot some pictures, if we will, while we're here.
Do you want to go first?
While we're gone, let's hear, let's do this, and then we'll, we'll get back.
Council, y'all have to hold some of this stuff.
Come on, Mr. Baseball Fan.
I'm a baseball fan, but I'm not a council member.
Okay.
Are we good?
Um, can we move a little bit? No, no, can't.
This way. Stand still.
I'm standing.
There you go. Ready, one, two.
All right, my turn. Same place. One, two, three, cheese. I'm going to do two with a flash, and then I'll do two with that. All right? Two with that. One, two, three.
Thank you. You've got to get that one back. Where is it?
Did you get all that? Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Council, thank you. We're good. Everybody?
All right, same thing, two with a flash, and then two with that.
One, two, three. And then like that. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you.
Hold my hat. Smush at it.
Be careful.
All right, always fun to have a great night like that with, with good things happening. Again, Matt, thank you for your service, and we are, we're honored that longtime resident and supporter of Lenore and Caldwell County. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then on our agenda to, tonight we have a couple of matters scheduled for public hearing. The first one is our FY 2022-2023 annual budget. This is to, hearing is to be held to receive public comments regarding the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, for the City of Lenore. And upon the conclusion of this public hearing, the council may take action on adoption of our enclosed budget for 2022-2023 budget ordinance. So I will open the public hearing, and we'll ask if there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning our budget. All right, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any actions they would like to take. Mr. Hildebrand, anything you want to add to this point?
I will amend it, though.
Okay?
I will amend it, though.
Okay? You will amend it? Okay. All right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the FY 2022-2023 annual budget as submitted by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Beal that we approve the FY 2022-2023 annual budget as presented by Mr. Hildebrand and our fine staff. Any other comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make.
Yes, sir. Please do.
It goes without saying, I think we, what we're recognized is having one of the best finance departments in the state, as Donna was recently awarded and our city was awarded. Our budget is, is our governing document. It's what we, it's our blueprint for how we operate our year, and I want to congratulate Scott, Donna, and the others, the department heads, that once again, put together a budget that, that makes sense, it's doable. Our staff continues to do a lot that's included in this budget that we self-perform, things of that nature. They're constantly looking for ways to save money. We're able to keep our tax rate where we are because of things like that, the scrutiny that Scott and his staff give to the budget. So it's, it's again, a wonderful job. This is going to be a budget that's not going to be without challenges as the national economy continues to, to perform as it does with, with inflation, with the rising gas prices, and, and I'm very confident that there's contingencies built into that that will allow us to, to meet this budget. So I just wanted to make note that Scott, congratulations, and John, thank you for making that motion. I look forward to approving it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else make some comments? I agree totally with Mr. Perdue. We, we have a wonderful staff. We appreciate all the hard work that they, they do. They hunt for every way they possibly can to save money, find ways to make it better in any way they can, and they've done a great job of that. Appreciate Mr. Hildebrand, Donna Bean, the Finance Director, and all our department heads for their leadership and, and just putting together a fine budget. We are, we, we try to hold everything down as much as we possibly can, but we want to provide the, the best services we can for our citizens of this city. So we're very proud of that. So I echo Mr. Perdue's comments, and I know that this council feels very much the same way. So, all right, if there's anyone else that would like to make one, you have opportunity now. If not, we have a, a motion, I think, on the floor, didn't we? Yes, sir, from Mr. Beal. And I will entertain a vote. All in favor of the annual budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hildebrand?
I would just like to thank council for the guidance and echo the comments, Donna Bean, Finance Director, and all our department heads for their leadership and, and just putting together a fine budget. We are, we, we try to hold everything down as much as we possibly can, but we want to provide the, the best services we can for our citizens of this city. So we're very proud of that. So I echo Mr. Perdue's comments, and I know that this council feels very much the same way. So, all right, if there's anyone else that would like to make one, you have opportunity now. If not, we have a, a motion, I think, on the floor, didn't we?
Yes, sir. From Mr. Beal. And I will entertain a vote. All in favor of the annual budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hildebrand?
I would just like to thank council for the guidance and echo the comments, Donna Bean, Finance Director, for her work and department directors, and also staff for, every year putting the, the plan to work. So just thanks to everybody for that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our second public hearing this evening, is the resolution. This is for the Comprehensive Plan Update. This hearing will be held to consider adoption of a resolution amending the 2007 Comprehensive Plan to incorporate by reference the plan studies and policies developed since its initial adoption, and establishing a protocol for maintaining and amending the plan in the future. I will open the public hearing, but first, we will hear from our Planning Director, Ginny Weavitt. If you have anything you'd like to bring us up today on.
Good evening. Yeah, I won't take up too much time, but I appreciate Mr. Perdue's comments about the budget being the blueprint, because if you think about it, this plan is also the blueprint of, of how we, you know, plan year for year. This is the comprehensive plan, looking, you know, 20 to 30 years out. The date on the plan is 2007. We have been doing planning every single year since 2007. This document was written and adopted during a time when we weren't really thinking about amending the plan. It really was something like, and now this is the plan, and we're going to, you know, implement it, but things change. So some of the things that this resolution does is just memorialize that we have been amending it all along. We've always treated it as an amended plan, as we have done other work, you know. This group does planning every single year. We get together, we build on what we did last year, so some of those visions then will be incorporated in this as well, kind of by reference for now, but we're working on like a fully, you know, new document, kind of amended and restated, which will be coming before you at some point here in the next year or two as we develop it. One thing this does is pull the data out. This is something that's happening all over the state. It makes sense to do. We, your plans are supposed to be based in data, you know? If you're a rapidly growing place, we need to know that because we're planning to accommodate growth. If you're experiencing, you know, population decline, we need to know that so we can accommodate, you know, how we kind of right-size our neighborhoods and infrastructure, and how do we deal with vacant houses? But you open up the document, you start reading it, you've got numbers from 2005 in there. In 2007, we were already, our population was declining, but the document talks about projected population growth from 2005, you know? So those numbers are a snapshot in time, they're meaningful, they don't necessarily kind of carry through. So we will provide that as a separate document, and it will inform it in the future, but then it is kind of the goals and policies in there will be the meat of it that will amend each year through a public process. Or maybe not each year, but as need arises, you know, we do a small area plan, we'll amend the comprehensive plan actually, instead of just kind of, we adopt the small area plan and then staff applies it, you know? So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know it's kind of a lot of conceptual, but it's pretty much just you're adopting the way we're already doing it and showing the state that we do planning so we can still enforce our zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Ginny concerning the Comprehensive Plan? This has been always a work in progress and will continue to be. It will continue to be. You're right.
There's a great quote, I think it's Churchill, maybe, that says, plans are useless, but planning is essential. And the act of planning and engaging the communities and sort of staying on the pulse of things, we can never predict 100%, and the private sector has to have that flexibility to be able to, you know, engage in their business, but we can help, you know, strategically invest in the right spots and the right things.
A lot of things have changed in our community since 2007 and before.
Absolutely.
Still, still changing every day, so.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments or questions for Jenny? Thank you. We are in the public hearing. If there was anyone in the audience that would like to address the council concerning this resolution for our Comprehensive Plan Update, you're welcome to do that at this time. All right, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for a motion to, I guess, to adopt this resolution for our Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution for our Comprehensive Plan Update.
Thank you. I have a motion for Councilmember Perkins to adopt the resolution concerning our Comprehensive Plan Update, and we'll look forward to hearing a lot of great things over the time. If any, no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you for all your, your, your staff and your work and working with all our department heads and of course, our administrative staff for, for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mac will miss seeing you every fourth Monday night.
I'll miss being there, too.
And thank you, Mac, for your part of being a part of that for, for a number of years. All right, we'll move on then to our consent agenda items. This consists tonight of quite a few. We have minutes of our city council meeting of Tuesday, May 17th as submitted. Item B are minutes from our city council meeting of Tuesday, May 17th. That's closed session minutes of our city council meeting of May 17th. As reviewed, these were reviewed by the city attorney, city council, and the city manager. Item C are minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, May 24th. Item D is the capital project budget ordinance for 2022 Uniform Consortium Home Program. This will be approval of a capital project budget ordinance in the amount of $1,530,918 for the 2022 Uniform Consortium Home Program as submitted by Rick Oxford from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. He is the plant administrator. Item E is the capital project budget ordinance for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program. This will be approval of that program in the amount of $153,768 for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program as submitted by Mr. Rick Oxford, again, from the COG. Item F is the budget amendments for the FY 21-2022. Staff request approval of the amendments to the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 as follows. Item 1, increased revenues for the general fund in the amount of $905,000 due to revenues exceeding the budgeted amounts for sales tax, PAL bill funding, and cemetery lot sales. Item 2 is the increased expenditure lines in the general fund in the amount of $905,000 to allocate additional revenue and reallocate funding by department. Item 3 is reallocate funding for the water fund with a zero net effect to the budget. Item G is the capital project budget ordinance for the Johnston Water Works Incorporated. This will be to adopt the capital project budget ordinance for the project to authorize activities for the purchase of the Johnston Water Works Incorporated project in the amount of $100,000 as submitted. Item H is the budget amendment for the Johnston Water Works Incorporated. This is for approval of the budget amendment in the annual project budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 as follows. Item 1, adjustment to the water fund budget to allocate funding in the amount of $100,000 for the Johnston Water Works Incorporated purchased project approved on May 17th, 2022 as submitted. Item I is resolution for the ROW dedication, that's the Prince William Drive. Approval of the resolution accepting the dedication of the right-of-way for a 220-foot extension of Prince William Drive by GTE Construction and Realty and accepting the newly created extension for city maintenance as submitted. Item J is a meeting cancellation. This is for the city council meeting that we will cancel our June 21st city council meeting due to no agenda items, and the next meeting will be the committee, the whole meeting on Tuesday, June 28th at 8:30 at City Hall. All right, there's, that's your consent agenda items A through J. I will open it up for any discussion from anyone on the council.
There was a lot to read.
It was.
Needs some oxygen.
My voice gets tired.
Mayor, make a motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to, to approve the consent agenda item that's A through J as presented. No other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. All right, we will move on then to next on our agenda as requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that's here tonight that would like to address the council, please do so. If you will come to the podium and give us your name and address, and please, if there's a number of people that are planning on speaking, please be brief. Thank you for that, if you will.
I'll be as brief as possible. I guess the first question I have, does any of the council?
Wait a minute, give us your name and address.
Larry Smith.
Thank you.
701 Penton Avenue, Lenore.
Okay, thank you.
AKA Frosty.
Frosty, okay.
I'd ask the question, does any of the city council mayor know the reason I'm here tonight?
Who not?
Uh, good. I think that's good. And that was the reason we came. I'll briefly come in and give a thumbs up to Mayor Gibbons. Any issue I've ever asked him to look at, it's been dealt with professionally in every way. So I first want to give him a thumbs up. I mean, I know he loves Lenore and is one of the best PR guys. And also, I'll give Chief Phelps a thumbs up, too, on the issue that's going to be brought up to you all tonight. Once it got on his radar, he has addressed one of the issues. There's two issues mainly that, that want to be addressed tonight. I'll say, like I say, my name's Larry Smith, I'm a Christmas tree grower. I've sold Christmas trees here in Lenore for 42 years. And the reason that I'm here to speak tonight, it's, 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 the first issue's been going on for years, and it needs, in my opinion, needs to be addressed. It's my understanding that at 710 Penton Avenue, that this place is really a nuisance to the neighborhood, and, and they've been bullied for years, the residents, and you'll, you'll hear their stories tonight. And the other issue is dealing with the, the homeless that's harassing customers at different businesses and destroying personal property of business owners, and would like to see how the city council may address that and see how that might can be addressed. I'll say, this issue's so important to me that I'm willing to go to jail for it.
You're talking about the 710, 710 Penton Avenue?
Yes, sir, 710. When, when kids, there, there'll be a family member speaking here tonight that's got three little kids, and they cannot go in the backyard and play in their own backyard because of the smell, the flies, the cussing, the drug addicts pearing at their children. So that's why I'm here. So right here's a warrant for my arrest for communicating a threat. These neighbors have been bullied too long. I'm not going to be bullied. I told a guy that I was going to bust his effing head, and that wasn't a threat. That's a promise. If I go to jail for that, so be it. I had to come back to court for stalking Monday. Now, these people are down here bumming money from customers at the Little Caesar's and the Run-In Store, and they're harassing their neighbors, and this has been going on for years. I'm going to show you a few pictures, and I, if you don't believe this, right down there, I spoke with the ordinance officer today, and Chief Phelps and one of the lieutenants had him go down, and I'm not a police officer and don't understand this, but he said there was a complaint, the ordinance officer goes down there and takes a picture in the front yard of a chair. I don't know, police work, I'd look in the backyard also. I mean, if a detective, if they told you there's a dead body in somebody's yard, would you go down and look in the front yard, or would you look in the back? He went down and took a picture, and you'll see right here, I'll pass this around, there's a chair there sitting out on Penton Avenue. If you'll look over to the side, there's a mailbox there. Last Tuesday, I was here before I had a conversation with the chief. The lady that delivers the mail would not even touch the handle on the mailbox. She literally opened the mailbox up, but with the mail, and pushed it closed with another piece of mail and gagged because of the scent of the cat urine and feces in the driveway, out on the road. Now, that's not acceptable to me. I, I walked, I walked from this mailbox to the mayor's front steps at his house. 900 steps. That's seven and a half football fields, a half a mile. I know Becky and Joe has two wonderful grandchildren, but if his grandchildren couldn't grill, if he couldn't grill out in their backyard, or they couldn't go out there and play, I don't think that would be happening. Let me slide my glasses on here. I'll be very brief. Right here's another picture of a house that's been made out of pallets and a tarp put over it. It's feet from the neighboring house, which is very, very nice. And I don't understand, you'll see this fence broken up right here. These people broke their neighbor's fence down and burned it. When the police shows up, they did nothing. They'll, they'll, they'll tell you this story. Right here's the back of it. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. There's a dog tied up there, you know, I don't know if animal enforcement's been contacted. I know there's numerous animals in the house. Here's another picture of another part of the fence that's been broken. I'll end quickly, but here's some of Lenore's finest hanging out down at the, smoking who knows what, and hanging out, but people that go down there to get gas and get pizza, they don't want to be harassed, asked to be bummed, you know, for money. I mean, I'm up for helping anybody that's willing to help themselves. And I'll leave you with this picture. As you can see, this was taken prior about a week and a half prior to the, the Oklahoma City shoot, or Tulsa where they shot at the hospital. These guys are hanging out up there, and I saw them harassing staff coming out, visitors coming out from the hospital. Not only is this location a half a mile from the mayor's house, it's a half a mile from Davenport Elementary School, which is right behind this building. Let's address this situation before something happens at the hospital. Heaven forbid up here at the school, you know? That's all I have to say. If any questions, I've got a whole lot more to share, but at this time, I'll turn it over and let whoever wants to come up and speak next, and thank you very much.
Could you share those pictures?
Yes, sir, I will be gladly.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening.
My name is Tommy Nelson. I've got Tom, must be Tommy's a lot to go by. I reside somewhat with my sister at 707 Park Street, which is directly in front of this house that you're talking about.
Okay.
She purchased this house from Dr., I mean, from Mr. Spawning Bird in 2005, and since then, she has spent, and I mean, quite a bit of money remodeling and doing a lot of projects on the house. When she retired from the school system, she asked me if I would look around in the city limits, find her a house on a small lot that she could, you know, get out of the apartment that she was living in at the time. So we found that house at 707 Park Street, and seemed like a nice place, but through the years, problems have created over and over again. Like the gentleman said a while ago, we built a nice back porch on that house to where we could go sit, you know, when the cool of the evening, enjoy the evenings, but you can't sit out there. In the wintertime, they're burning their fences and anything else they can get. I don't know what they do in the summertime, but we, we still have smoke coming in the back door, even in the summertime. They have a hut built out of these pallets, you know, shipping pallets. They have a hut built with a floor them laying on it and walls around it and a canvas top over the tarp. And I can't, I, I built a fence there when we first moved there. My sister first moved there. I built a fence, a wooden fence, put it across on the line. Well, it started deteriorating somewhat, so I decided, my sister wanted to build another fence, so we put a chain link fence up, you know, with the little lattices or whatever you call it that goes in it, a blind. And I told her I was going to leave the old fence up because it would help the smell from coming over into the backyard. We don't use the backyard. All I do in the backyard is mow it. And I built another wall beside the little building that she had built when, after she moved there. We went up here and we got, you know, everything we needed to get to build it legally and by the city's code, and that's the way it was built. But now, we have one right behind it that's made out of pallets and tarps and everything else. And I've looked over the fence before, and I've seen toilet paper sitting out there. There's a dog there that's been in that yard ever since we've been moved, ever since my sister moved there. The same dog, and he woofs all the time, which, you know, a dog's going to bark, but he's chained out there, and he's been there ever since my sister bought the house. Now she's got a couple of more dogs, but she keeps them in the house, I understand. But it's just a stinking smell all the time, and we have no use for the backyard. The neighbors that live beside us are here tonight. They can tell you somewhat of what goes on with our children and stuff. They won't let them play in the backyard, and I don't blame them. The other day, I was, about three weeks ago, I was out there in my building doing some stuff, and I heard two of them get into an argument. And here's what I heard. "I will F you up if you mess with me, you SOB." That was said over and over numerous times. Luckily, the kids wasn't out there at that time. But that's the kind of thing that my sister's having to be put up with. And she wanted just to retire from the school system, find her a little house, and, you know, have a decent place to live out for the remaining of her years. But it's just been a headache ever since she's lived there, and nothing has ever been done about it. I don't even know these people, and, and they'd be, fact about, I don't want to know them. But these people congregate, these street people congregate in that little old rickety thing they got there every night. You can hear them out there going on and stuff, and the neighbor tells me that he smelled pot, and I don't know what, what else goes on out there. But they, they have to be urinating in the yard, they're not going in the house, and you can smell it. If you, if you don't believe it, come down there, I will give you a firsthand look at it and let you smell it yourself. But that's all I've got to say, and I'm here representing my sister tonight in Herbie High. And I don't know where my neighbors want to come and speak or not, but it is a problem, and something definitely should be and needs to be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
My name is Megan Brichette, and I was a caregiver at 713 Penton Avenue from June of 2018 until March of 2021 last year. I took care of an elderly lady. I took care of an elderly lady that was in her 100s. She passed away at 104. This house has been a nuisance for many, many years, and I didn't know that until I started working with them. The mom and the son are always threatening to hurt each other. They cuss each other. They have many animals that they don't take care of. I've actually saw drug deals go, you know, go through there in their driveway and stuff. The cops have been called multiple times, and I got to witness that. And I couldn't even sit outside with my client for her to enjoy the sunshine because of all this. And like they've talked about, the smell is awful. I was actually at 713 a few weeks ago, and I was standing out in the driveway talking to my little client's son, and you could smell it. And the mom pulled up with the son that's on drugs, and they started arguing as soon as they got out of the vehicle. I have ten grandchildren. They range in ages from 15 to two months, and one on the way. Those children should not have to live like that. They should be able to play in their backyard and not have to deal with all of that. On the way here, stopped at the store right there at Little Caesar's, and a man came in behind me. There's a man went in front of me, and a man came in behind me, and they were talking. And this man said, "Are you the one that they had to call the ambulance for?" And he said, "Yeah, right over there on Penton." They thought he was dying from a fentanyl overdose. Now, if that's not saying something, I mean, nothing else will. It needs to be fixed. The children should not have to live like that in their own yard, in their own home, be afraid to go outside. No, that's not right. So like I said, I've got grandchildren. I have children. I wouldn't want my kids or my grandchildren to live like that. But yeah, something needs to be done. It's actually gotten worse since the lady's boyfriend died. More things have been going on. And I, my client's son is not here, but, you know, it's hearsay. But he was telling me other things that had been going on and had gotten worse. But, you know, like I said, three years of working with Ms. Burna, and I saw a lot. People would come down Penton, down the hill and stop at their house. I figured it was to buy drugs because, you know, they were only there a few minutes, and then they would take off back up the hill. And this was multiple times a day. And like I said, it's not right. You shouldn't have to live like that. You're paying, you're paying your house payment, and you're wanting to have everything in your home or outside of your home for your children, for your grandchildren, and you can't even enjoy it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
My name is John Miller. I'm the one with the three kids that lives diagonal back behind the residence.
What's your address, Mr. Miller?
709 Park Street. I'm associated with me, I had a bicycle out behind the house where we ride our kids around town. And the bicycle I'd got gone, I started weeding and seeing it through the fence in the residence. Covered up with a tarp and everything, so I called the police. They'd come back, and they give me the bike back, but they couldn't press charges or anything because they didn't actually see who took the bike. Well, two days after that, the bike had got gone again. We didn't have any cameras on the residence at the time. So I put some up maybe one week after that, and then I'd seen one of the guys that hangs out over there coming around at 5:43, I believe, sneaking around, sneaking around the back of the house, you know, messing with them again. But I had those chained up. And other than that, you know, we don't let them go out there because, you know, they sit there and they stare at them. There's always four or five, like new people just in circles, you know, using drugs and...
It was about, I mean, it's been going on for a long time, but over the last few months, they would take like pieces of our wood off our fence that Tommy mentioned. That's, you know, it's on our fence. It was like piece at a time. I don't know if they was doing it because they thought I wouldn't notice. I don't know. But one day, I come home from my grandparents' house, and I looked out there like I always do. I always look out there to see if they've been messing anymore. And it was every bit from maybe half of that white thing, I mean, just gone. You see the picture of it that Larry had. And that's when I've had enough. So I called the police, and they come out there after John got home from work, and they talked to him. The lady that, she don't own the house, it's in a trust is what I hear, cussing me, threatening me, telling me I've caused her nothing but hell. I mean, just on and on, saying she's going to fix that fence. And I'm like, you know, she was never going to fix the fence anyways. So the cops said that if we could, you know, see who did it on our cameras, that we could press charges. Well, we don't have a camera on that fence. We have a camera on our back building because we have dirt bikes out there, and we have a front camera on our front porch. So we didn't, you know, we couldn't see exactly who was doing it. But she admitted that, she wouldn't say exactly who it was, but she said, yes, we've been taking the fence down. So that was that. They couldn't do anything. The police went over there and showed them the markers, saying, you know, this is her fence. If you want to put up a fence and take it down, that's fine, but quit messing with her fence. So that was that. And then we had the bicycle issue. My daughter, she's 10 years old. She was in the backyard probably a few months ago, her and her cousin. And there was an older man staring, standing right at the fence, just staring at her. Just standing there staring at her. And when she comes in like squalling because she's scared, that's enough. Something has to be done. My kids, I have a one-year-old, she's 10, and I have a three-year-old that cannot go in the backyard and play because of these people. I mean, what's it going to take? I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's ridiculous, and it's sad. My kids can't be kids because of these people.
Thank you. We understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, hello.
Hello.
My name's Jim Spontenberg, and I live at 308 Bell Street, Northwest Lenore, North Carolina, 28645. Firstly, I want to thank y'all for recognizing the community college and its athletic program and everything that it has done and been successful with this year. I'm on the Board of Trustees, and we very much appreciate all the cooperation and support we get from the city of Lenore. Thank you very much.
Very well.
With that being said, the reason I'm here, though, is because Larry had talked to me. I am a client, or I am a real estate agent with a client that owns 676 Morganton Boulevard, which is the old First Union Building. And we have had major issues with people who are homeless, I guess by definition, who stay on the grounds of the, of the building or the location any number of times. It's been over late, maybe the last three or four years, I think. We have had them break into the building itself, mess up the plumbing, do all kinds of damage on the inside, and we fixed that. That was a couple of years ago. Thought we had it a little bit better, but then recently, we started having more issues, and they completely destroyed the heating system, HVAC thing on the, on the back. So we have had some expensive things happen to us in that building from the homeless people that are there. Every time I have called the police, they have responded and have done a good job, and I much appreciate that, and I have no issue there. What I want to do is see if there's something that my owner can do and I can do to help work with you, the city, to help that particular situation. If you need any kind of permission from us to do anything, if you need us to sign anything, you let us know. We appreciate the support we're getting from you, but we also have the problem. And I'd like to get rid of the problem if we could somehow. Thank you, and that's, well, have a safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will encourage you to talk to Chief Phelps about that and see what can be done in that, in that capacity.
Be glad to work with you and the police department.
We appreciate that.
We have not ever had anybody not respond when we called. Problem is, I don't live there, so I'm not there all the time and don't know what's going on all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Edith Cordova, and we live at 706 Penton Avenue. I want to agree with all my neighbors. We all have the same issues. We all seen the same things. We live there, we are next door. My husband and I, we have two kids, grown kids now, but we lived there 10 years, lived there 10 years ago. We've seen a lot of things at that house, but in the last couple of years, it has gotten worst. We know about somebody dying of overdose at that house in their backyard. They have street people camping in their yard. They have a poor dog that they don't take care of that sometimes my husband feeds him because, I don't know, poor dog. So there's a lot going on there. But the worst thing is just accumulation of trash and smell that comes out of that house. And she, she's just a trouble always. It's, it, there's a lot of stories that I don't have time to tell you. Once, we had hired pest control to get rid of all the flies, but that didn't work because it wasn't in our place. So we have flies in front of our front door and in our backyard. And even in the, in the winter, where flies don't come out. So it's, it's just something that needs to be dealt with. We can't grill. We can't hang outside, and it's just something very bad. So we are really afraid that after flies, we'll get mice and rats. So that's something that we don't want to, and I hope this gets fixed before we have some more creatures in. Thank you for hearing us. I hope this can be fixed.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anyone else that wants to address the council? Thank you.
I'd like to be recognized, but not implicated in that case.
Yeah, we'll cut, we'll get to that in just a second. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Go finish this one, and then we'll let you do that. Thank you.
Can, can we speak on this for a second?
Yep.
I know we generally don't with citizen comments, but I've got a question to Jenny. Where does this fall, where's this location fall on our matrix of problem houses that we're working? Because if it's not at the top, it needs to be.
That was the next statement I was going to make.
And that's, that's going to be, that's going to be a request from council if it's not.
I see Chief is coming up here to maybe address this too, because, so, from what I'm hearing tonight, it sounds like there, there may be issues inside the house.
Certainly issues outside the house.
All those issues, yeah. So as far as a nuisance property, I think that it is pretty close to the top of our radar. As far as minimum housing, when we've gone out there before, like, we have not thought that that was the direction to go because it doesn't really address the main issues.
Concerned from a minimum housing, but I mean, if we've got, we've got health issues there.
Oh, yeah.
The smell and the, and the critters and things. So it's got to be at the top.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And we just, we were out in another property, you know, a week or two ago with a very similar smell issues from animals. I think there's some article in the paper about it, and I don't know with animal control if they've been involved or not, but yeah, I'll let Chief speak on it, and then we'll come in and do minimum housing if that's what it's going to take inside the house.
But it sounds like there's code enforcement issue on, on some of these other issues. The minimum housing, I don't think you're going to see it on your minimum housing radar, but...
Right.
But there seems to be a multitude of other issues that concern me from a code enforcement standpoint.
Absolutely. So Chief's guys are over those ordinances, the violations. So let's see. Chief, you want to?
It appears, it appears to be an absentee owner also.
Is it, is it owner occupied or is it tenant occupied?
The female that lives there with her son is given authority to live there by their own family who owns the property. In speaking with that family out of state, they are aware of the issues. They, at this point, are not interested in removing their family member and son out of the property. We have an open nuisance case on the property currently. We have had cases on them in the past. They have been cited and fined in the past. This is a, unfortunately, a classic example. Our nuisance are a civil punishment. And, and those work well for people that have a desire to follow the rules. What we were told by the family was, fine us and we'll pay the fines. We are looking into other options as far as some of the criminal nuisance statutes. Whether it's going to meet those thresholds yet, I don't know. We've not been that far into it. There are, there are concerns there. One of the issues that is hard for law enforcement to deal with is there are people that are being allowed to come on the property. Well, they're not trespassing if the person that's in control of the property is allowing those folks to be there. So that ties our hands some as law enforcement of just being able to show up and remove people that may be causing a problem from a property. We did make an arrest out there a week and a half ago for a disorderly conduct. We were able to get statements from a citizen nearby that overheard some language and some, some things, and we were able to put that person in jail. Another individual that was causing problems, we served a warrant on him this past weekend. We are trying to address the issue. It, it frustrates us when we feel like we can see a problem and our hands sometimes are tied to be able to fix it. I have children. I have a daughter and a son, and, and I feel for these parents. I understand their frustration, and we're going to try to do everything in our power to, to address the issues that we can. Some of the other concerns that were brought up with, with homelessness, unfortunately, that is a social issue that we're dealing with all over our country. We, the police department and Yokefella initiated some community meetings and group meetings back in the fall to try to sit down to, to look at, okay, how do we try to address some of, some of these concerns? We had a couple of those back in April. Some of our officers and Yokefella staff went out to businesses in our city and tried to make contact with the business owners to educate the businesses on what legally, where they stood on if, if there's a homeless person or a person on your property that you don't want there, here's your legal rights, here's how, here's how you contact us. And also, we made contact with folks that appeared to need services, and we made them aware of the services in our community that, that are there for them, to try to provide help for those individuals. Unfortunately, some of that population, not all of that population, but some of that population does not want that help because some of that help comes with guidelines. And, and they do not want to follow those specific guidelines, and so that help is not available. And so that obviously complicates that issue. We have, are working to do another day with us and Yokefella to go back out to the community and hit some other areas where we have a lot of that kind of activity. And so we, the police department is trying to be on it. Me and a lieutenant went and met with Mr. Smith the other Friday. Lieutenant Howard has talked to some of, of the residents here, not all of them, about the issues down there. We're going to try to address the issues at 710 to the best of our ability, but it's complicated, and it is slow. And I know from the resident's mind, it's not fast enough. When, when you are living next to a problem situation, you know, that needs to be resolved three weeks ago, not three weeks in the future. And I understand that, and I understand their frustration. But we're bound legally by laws in, in whether it's dates and guidelines and timeframes for owners to correct problems, which is where we are right now with the open nuisance case. Or, you know, there are a lot of misdemeanors that if it doesn't occur in an officer's presence, we don't have the legal authority to arrest. So what that does is whoever it occurred in front of, they have to be willing to come to court and testify. And, and that is a big stretch a lot of times to get somebody from the community to be willing to say, yes, I'll come and I'll testify, and I'll be at court every time for the next however long it takes to go through the court system. And so it, it is a complicated issue. But we're on it. To the residents, I encourage you, I know Lieutenant Howard told you, anytime you have an issue, please call us. I am sure at times it feels like the police department came out, and I'm not sure that anything got done. Call us because, one, it puts, it shows a track record. It gives us a date and time of incidents and community concerns. And so that gives us data. When we're looking at and trying to address an issue, if we are able to get to the place of a nuisance concern, that data, that, that helps us because we can say we've responded to this many calls. So please continue to call us if at any point, believe me, when, when these things come up and, and get to this level, you know, we have meetings with supervisors, and we make sure all supervisors are, are dialed in and tuned in and, and paying attention. So we're trying to address the issues. And so, that gives us data. When we're looking at and trying to address an issue, if we are able to get to the place of a nuisance concern, that data, that, that helps us, because we can say we've responded to this many calls. So, please continue to call us. Uh, if at any point, um, believe me, uh, when, when these things come up and, and get to this level, you know, we have meetings with supervisors, and we make sure all supervisors are, are dialed in and tuned in and, and paying attention, so we're trying to address the issues. But if, if officers come out and you don't feel like they addressed it the correct way, call and ask to speak to one of the captains or myself, and, and we'll look into it. We may not, can always handle it or deal with it as fast as you want to, or the outcome you immediately won't, but I promise you, we'll listen to you and we'll look into it and make sure we, we did what we could do. Questions?
Chief, does it, does it help? I know you said that if your officers, officers don't witness the event, but does it help if they have tape recordings, cameras?
Yes, it, it does. Um, if, thankfully, with where cameras are today, a lot of people have, uh, home surveillance, uh, video cameras and security systems, and that helps us, because a lot of times, those events are captured on camera, and then we can use that. We will still need somebody from the property or whoever owns it to be a part of that process, but it does help.
Thank you.
And you did, and you did say that, um, we have, you have talked to the owners, the family in the, out of state.
We have.
Made them aware of what's happening. I mean, I know they, they want the people, it sounds like what you said, to live there, but do they, they got to understand that they're, they're creating a lot of issues while they're there.
Yep. We, we've talked with them in the last couple of weeks. Um, we, we will be back in contact with them. Um, but, you know, that, it's...
I understand the issue there, but...
We looked at our ordinances, and if I'm not mistaken, you know, we expressed a great interest in having as much, as many teeth to our ordinances as we could, but we're bound by statute, are we not, TJ, as to the extent that we can from civil penalties?
And the Constitution. There are, there are limitations on, on what you can do. Now, there are time limits, and we've, we've taken some action, and I'm going to be talking to you a little bit about some of that later, um, in other areas. But, yeah, I mean, there are, it's, a lot of this stuff is hard to prove, because you don't actually see it happen, and when you do see it, it's hard to put all that together. But like he, like Chief Phelps said, getting the data together and getting the reports together, even if, as he says, nothing can be done immediately, you can accumulate that and then start something later.
But it's, it's truly, a case out of the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So, continue to call.
Yes.
Yep. Any other comments?
I'd like to address and understand what these neighbors and these people are going through, because Chief, you're aware, and Jenny, that I have experienced some of the similar problems that you're experiencing today. And Mr. Smith, I have been where you at. Uh, maybe not as drastic as going to jail, because I couldn't get my church to come and bail me out, but nevertheless, I understand your frustration. And Chief, I know, and sometimes you just think that the law is not working in the resident or in the neighborhood's favor. But I've learned over time that we have to continue to work with you and allow the, uh, allow the law to take its due course.
Of course.
To you, I know that may not be any help, but eventually, it will clear out a lot of those people that we were having problems with. There's still a couple there, but it's not as bad as it was. So, to let you guys know that I believe that the chief and the police will do whatever they can within the law, and that's not always good to hear. You didn't come here to hear that. You want some resolutions, and I feel you. I know exactly where you at. I've been there and still yet some of that. I don't live in that community, but I grew up there. My church is there. So, I see it every single day, but just be for sure that our police department is doing everything possible they can do within the law.
It's a code, it's a code enforcement issue, we know, and it's, uh, we will, we will continue to do that. Uh, somebody had a comment?
Yes, uh, would the health department be, be good to involve this?
I think that's what Rapp and I were just talking, is, is, I think there's health issues there that could, could accelerate the situation, the, the settlement to the situation. I would hope.
Can you?
But that's going to be a county...
Right, right.
A county issue there.
But we could turn it over.
We can certainly do that.
We'll, we'll make every agency aware that might be aware, but, but the health department and a lot of what the county does is focused on making sure that legal things are built to code and meet the standards. Um, this, it would be, you know, a situation where you had a septic drain field failing, the health department might be involved with that.
Or if you have somebody living in a shed that's using the bathroom in the yard.
Yeah.
That, they're going to go, turn it right back to us, because they can't pull a permit to make it legal. You know, they're, they're more of a permitting type of agency. So, we'll make them aware if there's anything. Um, same thing for adult protective services, we will bring in sometimes. Um, you know, animal control.
Yeah.
Those are the big ones that we work with. But, yeah, well, absolutely, you know, anybody that will help us, we will pull in onto the team, but, um, it's making sure you're moving in the right direction, you know, with this stuff and not letting off, and over time, I mean, we, we build that record and we do clean it up.
Mary, do you have another comment?
Stay in contact with us.
I wanted to read, and I meant to do this at the end, but the city council member brought this to us. My last comment was, you know, I'm not going to never give up, that, uh, the good book says, "They're not grow weary in good," or if you don't give up, you will achieve good results in the end. So, just be, just continue on the fight and, uh, you know, even though Frosty's disappointed, I hope he don't have to make a special appearance, but, uh, you know, to hand out what the nuisance is, you know, Frosty would be a bit disappointed to go up July the 4th, and, uh, there'll be several thousand people down there on that corner, so we're seeing progress and we hope we continue to see progress.
Thank you for that. We will, we will, you heard the people that are involved here and what we intend to do. Council is well aware of it. Thank you for coming tonight and making us, uh, understand what's going on there, and we will do what we need to do to, to move forward with it. So, thank you for all your comments. We appreciate that. All right, I will, uh, we still have some others, I think, who wants to make maybe a comment on something different. Did we get everybody on the first issue? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Heinz, if you'd like to address us, please come forward.
I, uh, I was, Matt, can everyone hear me all right?
If you come here, we can.
All right, well, I, the problem is, I've got a map here and a pointer, and I just want to point out a few things.
All right, we could get someone maybe to help you with the map.
Come up to the podium.
Yeah.
I'll hold your map.
Yep. Joshua will help you with that, and Mr. Heinz, if you will, we need to get your name and address for us, if you will. Thank you for our records.
I am Leslie Darrell Heinz, Jr. I reside at 512 Stonecroft Court.
Thank you, sir.
I'm also known as Sonny.
Sonny, yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, this map, and I'm going to turn it over to Scott when we through it, and you can put it in your closet and forget about it, Scott. But thi- this map is a City of Lenore map. It's also was given to me by Jared Wright, uh, of the Street Department, formerly of the Street Department. Uh, solar orientation, here is Lower Creek School. Here is the school bus garage. Here is food line. We're talking about the Wilkes-Barre Boulevard, and I have put down here a blue line indicating a deceleration lane, which is badly needed on that highway. Uh, it's, and I would define, uh, as, as Webster did, a deceleration always refers to a slowing down of an object, and those objects are automobiles. If we're going to turn into Tremont Park or Stonecroft through Tremont Park Road, if we're coming out the Wilkes-Barre Boulevard and traffic is moving at 45, if we're lucky, it may be moving a little faster than that, and I want to commend the police department. Is the chief still here?
He is, he's back there.
Chief, I want to thank you so much, sir. You folks have really, uh, put a lot of emphasis on speeders out down the Wilkes-Barre Boulevard, and we really much, you've, you slowed traffic down greatly, and every time we see the blue lights, I rejoice. I won't rejoice if I see it in my rearview mirror. But, uh, uh, this is for future reference. We, I realize this is the DOT project, but I think the city council needs to be instrumental in reminding the DOT, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, that this highway is a hazard. Now, I'm told that a fatal accident occurred at this intersection, right here where Tremont Park takes off, back in April. Uh, there was no publicity about it. I only learned a few, few days ago that, that there was a fatal accident there, but I'm sure the reports show that. So, uh, I wanted to leave this with, uh, uh, our, uh, county, the city manager, Scott Hildebrand, and Scott, if, I, I realize that this, the scale on this is one inch equals 100, 100 feet. Now, I took 500 feet for this blue line. I know that's not going to happen, but you could, you could at least get maybe 300 feet if you talked to the DOT and got a deceleration lane there. When we're coming out the Wilkes-Barre Boulevard, traffic is moving swiftly, and you, you put your turn lane on, this street is, is 26 feet wide, it's three lanes, and if you have two cars trying to exit, you have about nine feet at 45 miles an hour. When you slow down, we slow down to about 20 miles an hour or 15 miles an hour, as, as the need might be, and we, we either need to, you've worked on it once to get a radius there, and I thank you for holding this very much, I really appreciate it. But, uh, you need to work further on widening this street if we're going to be turning into it. If you, if, when, when Lower Creek School is letting out, this entire street is full. We've got four or five cars in this turn lane. We've got cars coming from, from the direction of North Wilkes-Barre that are going to turn right into here, and they block, and, and rightfully so, they have no, no place to go. So, they blocked the right-hand lane of the Wilkes-Barre Boulevard to try and to turn in, but this, this street is full. And I would, I would note also that the city schools, the county schools have vaulted this story property, which means they're probably going to be expanding, possibly, in the future, which would be oaky doaks, except that it means more cars going to be coming in here, and traffic's going to get worse. So, that's my point. Let me just give this to Scott, man.
I'll take it.
Okay. Thank you so much for your... Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Mr. Heinz?
Yeah, I'll take it back to the office. I'll be called. That's all right. You don't get a...
Thank you very much for that.
I would note that Mike Martin would also agree with this. He lives in our neighborhood, and one of the things he said, Sonny, I'm with you on this 100%.
What, this one, that we didn't stack the deck when we come up here, that, you know, Sonny's coming. Coming out of driveway, had to wait Sonny to go by, so, but everything he's told you is correct.
Yes, sir.
You know...
Yeah, we've done some great studies of that, I know, so we know a lot about it.
But he can get a decel, some kind of deceleration, it would really be...
Well, you need a stoplight, too, while we're out.
Yeah, we tried to get a stoplight.
Get a stoplight. Nobody would listen.
Well, they've turned us down on that every time.
It ain't going to happen. We've been told that by DOT.
For 40 years.
But I think a deceleration lane would be a great safety factor. I really do, and a, a traffic light would be wonderful, but I've been told it ain't going to happen. So, let's work on deceleration lane and see what we can do with that.
Thank you very much. Our, our staff has heard this, so we will, we will do what, what we can to facilitate toward it. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council tonight while we're in this time for citizens? Okay, thank you all. Thank you all for being here. We certainly appreciate it on that, and we'll move on then. Uh, we do not have any reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of our city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. The ABC board will meet on Thursday, June 9th at 2:00. The Night Move Band will perform this Friday night from, um, 7:00 to 10:00 downtown on the stage. Uh, the Shelby Ray Moore Band will perform on Friday, June 24th, and the Seville Martinet Band will perform on July 8th, and the New Kids Superfly 90's Tribute Band will perform on July 15th. So, that's our concert series downtown this summer. We have two movies downtown this summer on the square as well. Uh, Encanto will be on Friday, June 17th from 8:30 to 11:00, and then Sing 2 will be on Friday, July 1st from 8:30 to 11:00. The LTDA will meet sometime this month. The date has not been set for that meeting, is, of today. Uh, the Lenore Tourism Advisor Development Authority will meet on, in June, and the date and time of that has been undecided. El Bab will meet on June 9th, 3rd floor City Hall. The City County Economic Development Commission will meet on Tuesday, June 14th at 8:00 a.m., and I think that's all. And as the mayor mentioned before, the meeting on the 21st has been canceled. The next council meeting will be on, uh, June 28th, committee of the whole at 8:30 a.m., and if you have questions, I'll try to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Hildebrand? I will mention one other item, since we are talking baseball tonight, that our local summer league team, uh, kicked off their season over the weekend, playing at Walker Stadium, and played, uh, three games there, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. They'll be back, uh, they'll be gone a couple of days, be back this weekend, so if you'd like to see some fun baseball, come up to Walker and enjoy and support the Lenore Legends baseball program. It's always a good thing. They're working with some local, uh, food trucks and concessions to, uh, to help them, so they're doing some good things for our city, and it also brings in people from out of town that are staying here, because it's all over the state, these teams are traveling into Lenore to play, so that's always good. All right, we'll, we'll go on to our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Yeah, I actually do have something for closed session. I don't think it'll take too long, but it's an update on litigation and a settlement.
Okay. Was there, will there be any rec, uh...
Uh, there, I think there probably will be action.
Okay.
Possibly.
Okay.
Up to you folks, as to whether there's action or not.
And I do not have any more than what I just said a few minutes ago from the mayor's office, any report from any of our council members that you'd like to bring up. Hearing none, then we will, uh, entertain a motion to go into closed session. I don't have all those call letters in front of me.
143-318.11.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
And I'll make a motion to that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Stevens to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, and we do, I guess, could anticipate maybe coming out. We'll just see as we, as we go forward. We want to, yeah, we can have a couple of minutes to refresh yourself, if you need to, before we go in. Do we want to go to the back room, or we want to do it here?
Goodbye.
Goodbye. All opposed. We're back in open session. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, we need to, uh...
From our city attorney, we're aware, a recommendation.
What I would like to do is update council, and we talked about this in closed session, since it did relate to potential settlement of a claim. Um, the city council has had folks come and talk to us over the last few months about Circle, no, about Circle Drive and Ridgecrest...
Ridgecrest.
Ridgecrest Street, uh, two duplexes out there, and continual problems that we're having with the police having to come out, and ambulance reports, and fights, and those sorts of things, and council made it clear that they wanted some, that you folks wanted something done about this. So, uh, I got in touch with Alcohol Law Enforcement, ALE, who has got a department that specializes in handling these sorts of public nuisances. They got involved, reached out to the property owners, reached out to the neighbors, did a huge amount of work, um, and I had the, uh, elected district attorney authorize, uh, make a request of ALE to participate in this, and, uh, the property owners who live out of state, um, it's inherited property, were very quick to agree to all this. So, um, we have fought, we filed last week, I filed on behalf of the city, a lawsuit against them, which has already been settled, uh, got settled yesterday, and just to, uh, just so we've got everything straightened out, um, it, it will prohibit nuisance from going on in that place in the future. Um, it, uh, subsequent conveyances or sales of the property have to be approved by the chief of police, so that's a new responsibility for you, Chief Phelps. Um, and we've, we've got the legal framework to stop what's been going on there. Also, until they sell it, nothing, it's, the property is to remain vacant. Uh, so, we've got the legal framework set up now to deal with this. Um, hopefully, it will go smoothly and this sort of thing will stop, but we've done everything we can up to this point to legally stop it at a systemic, systemic level, rather than just ad hoc each time something comes up dealing with it. And I understand, um, Ms. Wheelock sent an email out this afternoon saying that apparently the property owner, the near, the adjoining property owners are very happy to hear this has happened as quickly as it has. as quickly as it has. So I would ask that you consider filing a motion to approve the consent judgment and final order of abatement in 22 CVS 675, State of North Carolina, on relation of the City of Lenore versus Brian J. Stallings and Marie E. Stallings, Marie E. Bezio, beneficiaries of the estate of Porter, Porter J. Stallings, Jr.
Mr. Man, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this consent judgment, final order of abatement presented by our city attorney.
Okay. I have a motion from, did you get the motion? Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue that we do the motion that our city attorney just read to us. I won't go through all that again. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, sir, for your work already on that.
Well, again.
And now you're legal.
As a lawyer, I'm always stunned when things happen as quickly as this did, so.
I want to thank Jenny and Chief Phelps.
That's right. Thank you all for your hard work on that. I know it's been a tough deal out there.
And I believe Captain Wilson, Andy Wilson headed that up.